Okay, the next item will be addressed as both the CEIDC and the council. It's actually worded the vote in both places as the same. It will be open for a vote. We'll go through first CEIDC will, when we get to the point where the vote is, they will vote first and then the council will vote second. But it is worded the same and so when we open up the question, we're dialogue with it.
At the same time?
At the same time, I'm sorry. So it reads, item number eight, "Consider and take action on ratifying or rejecting decision to hire a new employee for the Crockett Economic and Industrial Development Corporation." And this is just the blanket position with no dialogue or appointment in that sense.
I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. Wait, was it in the discussion?
Yes, it's in the discussion.
You had, she wanted to say something?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I was asking, this is on the city council session or?
This is on both.
Okay, so.
So whatever, I mean, it would be, if you're speaking directly to via.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, help me understand clarity, I guess that's what I need to say. Because I was gonna ask, this is my question, is the CEIDC meeting, who called the, who called the CEIDC meeting?
The president.
Okay, so, the president was the only one that called the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in the, okay, and, well, the reason I ask this is because it takes three in the bylaws, it takes three board of directors to call a CEIDC meeting. As a matter of fact, in the bylaws, 6.07, open meetings, all meetings and deliberation of board shall be called, called, posted, convened, and conducted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Correct.
As amended. So what I'm asking are, and it doesn't say joint on the top of the.
It doesn't have to.
It doesn't?
We've had our attorney.
We have attorney, would you like to?
So it doesn't say joint, yes, yes, yes.
So the three council members, or the three board members, that comes into effect when you're talking about open meeting, the Open Meetings Act, or voting for an item. You have to have three board members there to call, to have a quorum and to vote on an item.
Yes.
The president has always been the one that's called EDC meetings for the history of the EDC. And that can be refuted by anyone here.
Okay, my understanding is that the executive director and the president, they get together and they talk about the agenda and the executive director is the one that calls the meeting?
The president always calls them, it's in the bylaws, the president calls the meeting. If she allows, if she defers that.
But it is.
So who sets the agenda?
The president sets the agenda.
In the coming.
The president is the one that sets the agenda.
So the executive director does not, so who, so, okay, so that means that, let me ask you this question, so that means that the posting of the previous, the posting of minutes on the window, that doesn't mean that the executive director violated any Texas Open Meetings Act because the president should, I'm asking a question.
No, I'm just saying, I think, I think you're mixing, you're talking about this president.
We're really talking about.
Okay, we're talking about one agenda item.
Yes, ma'am, but I'm trying to get there, I'm trying to get there.
Okay.
Because what I'm, what I'm trying to figure is the, we have two meetings and they're at the same time. So how can we decipher what meeting is what?
Okay, this is how you, is decipher.
Okay.
If you're looking, and we are, it is a joint meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
If you look at the joint meeting, item number eight, and then if you look at the, they're worded exactly alike.
But it doesn't.
At eight and four. And it is, it was, we have already announced that it was a joint meeting. And it's a joint.
It wasn't posted as a joint meeting?
It is, it is.
They're both posted.
They're both posted simultaneously.
They're two legally posted meetings at the same time at the same place.
Well, we just need to know, because my understanding, it has to have it on it, so.
No, ma'am.
So I would like to get a ruling on that to ensure.
That's fine, we can address that later, but we have to address.
Okay, right now, it just says it is.
Yes, sir.
And so right now, what we're addressing is, like I said, item number eight is identical to item number four. They're the same item. And what's gonna be different after, we're addressing it with CEIDC at this point, and we'll take a vote from that point, and then the council will vote on the same item, because it is a joint meeting, okay? So right now, what was on the table, it said, "Consider and take action on ratifying or rejecting the decision to hire a new employee for the Crockett Economic and Industrial Development Corporation." What your motion should be, do you, if you're gonna make a motion, are you gonna reject it, or you're gonna accept it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I said that I would make a motion. I said that I would make a motion.
Okay, wait, what else, I said she was.
I was asking, I'm just trying to.
Gonna make a comment as well? When we make, when we make this decision, if, if the decision is to ratify, which means to go back and retroactively approve the decision that was made prior, or reject the decision, I believe that there's some level of commitment that the employee has understood or assumed and taken in good faith. That, you know, that's the decision for others to make, but we need to assume the best. And if we are to vote to reject that position, then I would also recommend that the motion state that he be paid for time served to present, to address and minimize risks, that we pay him as promised to date. If council, if the board, because the first, the board is the one that approves all things related to personnel. But anytime the board approves things that require commitments of funds, then the EDC needs to back it up by approval as well. The, the council allows the EDC to make those decisions, to put it in the budget, remove it from the budget, not add it to the budget, and vice versa. So that's why the council will have to vote, if the EDC says, "We want to ratify and keep this position, we want to allow this position to be hired," then the council will have to back it up with a vote that says, "We want to make necessary appropriations in the current budget and the upcoming budget," because we're finishing out one budget year and immediately starting another one, and it's not in either budget. So council can also approve budget appropriations and putting the money in the budget. So that's why both, both boards and the council need to be involved in the decision.
So my question, okay, somebody have a question?
Could I, could I ask a question? What, what is the policies and procedures on, on hiring an employee for the CEIDC?
The CEIDC adopted the city council's personnel policy. So all city council, all of the city of Crockett personnel's policy and employee manual is equally adopted for the EDC employees. When it comes to the budget, council just saw the process to hire someone. I asked y'all three months ago requesting that we hire a utility clerk for our utility office. And we went through an entire process of budget workshops, of me presenting the costs associated, and also presenting the revenue, and building an entire budget with that utility clerk built into the new budget. And then, once council approved the budget, only then did I say, "Okay, now I will post the position." So I have to put, I have to post the position for a couple of weeks in our local workforce. We posted on our doors, it's been posted for about three weeks now. And then receive applications, and then we have an interview panel, and we go through interviews, and we select the highest qualified candidate. That's the process that's adopted.
Okay, so that's the policy and the procedure?
Correct.
Okay, all right, was this done on the hiring of this employee?
Let Mr. Gentry come up here and speak on that, because he can answer.
Only Mr. Gentry can answer that, that's what I said.
Come to the podium, please.
And, and I do wanna say, I think council needs to be very careful, this is not a personnel-related discussion. This is, do y'all want this position in the next budget, or do you not? And I think council needs to be careful, and Mr. Pemberton can correct me.
Are we in?
Where's, someone has to be done.
We're in council and joint board meeting, and both apply. We can't discuss personnel-related issues if Mr. Gentry did something right or wrong, or if procedure was followed right or wrong. I think council needs to decide, and the board, both need to decide, do we want this position in this current budget? Do we want to retroactively approve for the last, close to three weeks of, of hire, and moving forward, and make the necessary budget appropriations of, it's about eighty-seven thousand dollars for the salary, for the salary, and all personnel benefits, and benefits. A sixty-five thousand dollar salary plus personnel benefits. So those are the decisions that council needs to make, just as yesterday, and the board needs to make, do we want this position, or do we not want to hire an additional position right now?
Okay, we need to hear what he had to say and represent it.
But I wanted to preface, before we use the personnel.
It's been noted, it's been noted.
Okay, but.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. There. Ladies and gentlemen, some of you are aware, and a lot of you not, of the condition of the offices that we, we return to. During the time of assessment of those offices, we realized there was a lot of work to be done, including reorganizing that office. Pardon?
We need to say.
Excuse me, we're just, yeah, just no dialogue right now, we just.
During the assessment of that situation, there was a need for going through boxes, over a hundred boxes that were in my office. During that time, we couldn't even get in that office. I solicited some assistance from several people to assist me in cleaning the office up and making it workable again. But during the time, I realized that some of the issues that were identified from the forensic audit and other required a true assessment of what our files were and how best to do that. I mentioned this a little bit to the mayor, and I told her that I was looking at doing something different this time to try and get better control of our offices. Because of the assignments that came out of the forensic audit, it was identified that there were some inadequacies there that we needed to address. I went to the workforce and looked at what an office manager's position would entail, and whether they had any candidates, and then they, I went for is, after talking to them, to address putting it out for solicitation. We did put it out for two weeks. I was only able to get one applicant officially. There were several people that asked me about the position, but they, because of the political implication of this town, felt that was not something they wanted to pursue. We based everything based on past history of hiring that I've done in my tenure here, where in the item that is stated in 4.06, the executive director serves at the will and pleasure of the board. The executive director of the board may employ and terminate such full or part-time employees as needed to carry out the programs of the corporation. These employees shall perform those duties as are assigned to them by the executive director. Now, I heard some reference to the fact that we adopted the full policies of the city. I beg to differ on that.
No.
I was not able to locate the actual agreement that Mr. Bill Pemberton prepared, but back six or seven years ago, there were certain things that we did abide by or adapt from the city policy, but not the full policy. One of those was not in hiring, that my extent of hiring employees under my tenure or under my care. During that time, I've hired four different individuals in different positions during that time. So from that standpoint, we felt that we were legitimate in hiring this person. He's helped me already with several things in terms of organizing the office better, allowing me to develop other strategies for us moving forward. After a year and a half of being off work, my office was trashed, literally. So I'm actually asking for the assistance here to organize our office in a better position to be effective in this town. These people were, this person that I hired is well-qualified, in fact, I might say over-qualified based on his education and the jobs that he's had in education, law enforcement, as well as in other areas. So my point to you guys is that I felt like this candidate is one that could be a big help to me in terms of organization, in terms of us identifying, focusing on specific objectives that we want to realize in economic development here in our town, not only in the town, but how it impacts on the, how we're presented outside of this town. But I may not have answered all your questions, but that's my initial address to you.
Just have a question for you.
Yes.
Okay. What is the role of your executive director, assistant executive, I mean, her title?
Executive assistant.
Executive assistant, I've got it backwards. What is her role?
She is my secretary. She is, as I have stated in the past, to her as needed, different directions of responsibilities within her breadth of knowledge and capability.
Isn't that the, the general paperwork, the general, your general paperwork and all of that, the filing and all of that, isn't that part of the duties that were already assigned, previously assigned to her?
To the level that we're at, having to deal with some of those things, I thought it was beyond her capabilities to do that.
Okay, question.
Because what we're looking at is going through and assessing twenty-five years of files, attempting to be able to identify what necessary documents are being, are needed, and which ones we can destroy. But before we destroy them, I would prompt, before you guys, with a listing of those objectives.
Okay, I understand that.
We move forward with that.
But may I ask you one thing?
My executive assistant is a part of that deliberation right now. She's actually, I've given her and the office manager state directives in terms of developing procedures to handle all of our documents.
Okay, may I ask you one more question?
Yes.
Okay. There were no additional papers added to your department?
No.
During the forensic audit? What I am saying, what existed in those boxes was already under your operation?
Yes.
True or false? Okay, my concern is, if everything was already in the office, and haven't been placed in a box, as it was picked up directly and wasn't rearranged, it was just went box by box, my concern is, wouldn't it make, be more beneficial, I'm just saying, to use someone who was familiar with what was already in the office already, as opposed to bringing in someone that had never seen the information before? Because if she had been with you, she was familiar with it, and since nothing new was added, all it was done was paste into box and remove. And to me, once a box is there, you can simplify her by doing it a box at a time. And for the length of it, and the timetable that you're working in, since you're gonna have to look at each one individually yourself, to make those determination, to bring in an additional person, all they can do is pass it on to you without doing anything different. It's not gonna be anything differently done to the work, whether one person or your existing person do it, because your job technically would be that you'd have to give the last word of it, so you would actually have to handle it. So my concern is, why would an additional person at the, at the salary, that amount of salary, maybe a part-time person to help you move them and put them in a row, but for someone to have to come in, it seemed like a really large amount of money when you have an able-bodied person that only one person can kind of look at it at a time anyway. It's gonna have to be handled that way, because you have the last recommendation. Second concern is, I don't know if it's a concern we address at this point, is that if the procedure was being followed, why wasn't the board, your economic development board involved? You never talked, you talked to me about possibly, and that was just a general conversation, but it should have been, at one point, the board should have known, because you do have to have funding allocated, where it's gonna come from before you even begin, and then you have to have a full job description, and those things are spelt out. And they're spelt out under the policy, at the hiring policy, and it, and it, it wasn't, the procedures were not followed. And that is a concern.
I got one question, can I do it real quick? Can you tell me on the EDIC board, out of everybody here, who, who did the interviews?
Yes, I was able to, in my conversations with Mr. Jones here on your board, he offered to sit down with me to look over any job applications I had. He was with me when I interviewed the gentleman. Didn't do this in a vacuum. He was able to assess and ask specific questions that were helpful in determining this gentleman was qualified to do what I wanted to get done. And it was not just the paper hanging.
So just out of all of us right here, just, just Mr. Jones, Mr. Johnson didn't get invited?
Normally, I would hire one, I asked at least one person on the board to assist me. And sometimes I would even hire, would ask someone from the general public. During this time, I was not able to get a person that was from the general public to sit down with me, but I have in the past had my executive assistant who's sitting right here. I had a board member and a public citizen sit down with me to interview.
And don't, don't it state, don't it state that if, in the bylaws, that if anything over fifteen thousand dollars is gonna be spent, has to come before the board?
Well, considering the fact that I've never brought it before the council for this, I didn't realize that I needed to change my procedures.
Just, just, before, before.
Some of it, we can't handle, I forgot.
It was always, the procedures that you have always followed have always been because there was a budgeted position in your budget for that position.
Are you talking to me as city administrator?
I'm hiring, I'm talking to you. Mayor, do you want me to talk?
Yes, I mean, he, you gave, you brought the paperwork to him, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, and that's why he's addressing you?
So.
Because he would handle the paperwork.
The policies allow you, if you, if you cited policy CEIDC bylaw that says you may employ, I may employ. I can employ every one of these positions, it's from city hall to public works, but only when allocated by the budget. So I can make the decision if council gives me the opportunity to make that decision. If I can hire one person outside of my budget, I can hire fifty. You can't, you can only hire what is allowed by your budget. And that's what, you're citing bylaws that says you can, we really need to decide, the bylaws also say that all, all expenses have to be approved by your budget, your board, and city council. And if it's over fifteen thousand, council needs to approve it. But what I'm trying to say is, we need to get back to the decision, do y'all want an additional sixty-five thousand dollar employee to work on paperwork in Mr. Gentry's office? He has a contractor that does all of his EDC projects, he has an executive director, assistant, and himself. He has a budget, an expendable budget of less than five hundred thousand after payments. So we need to decide, do y'all want a new employee, or do you not want a new employee? Not really, because once y'all decide y'all want an employee, then we will, we can go through the process correctly.
So my question, now, my question is, so is he not allowed to amend his budget?
No.
Okay, so you're allowed to amend yours, but he's not allowed to amend his?
Tonight, council amended my budget, not, not me.
So what I'm saying is, you brought, okay, but that's what I'm saying, so once he mends his budget, can he bring it before?
He can't amend it. Y'all have, the board has to amend it. He cannot amend his budget, just like tonight, I amended, y'all amended my budget.
Just like what?
Just like tonight, y'all approved all amendments.
The board.
No one. I asked y'all to amend it.
The board amended.
I presented y'all with the proposal on the amendments, and y'all amended it, I can't amend it.
So he has not amended his yet, correct? So he can, he has an opportunity to amend it, right?
He cannot amend it, the board needs to amend it.
That's what I'm saying, he has an opportunity, my question, is, does he have an opportunity to bring his?
Tonight.
It depend on whether.
Tonight, yes, that's why it's on the agenda. That's why it's on the agenda. So when I hire a new employee that is not in my budget, I ask council, for instance, we hired, we hired a city administrator, an assistant city administrator, using a current employee, and that required an increase of about fifteen thousand dollar annual salary. I took that to council before I even went and offered that jobs. Even just a current employee, I had to ask for approval first, and then tonight, y'all followed it up with a budget amendment, but I have minutes that says, yes, I can hire an assistant city administrator. So that's the process that needs to be followed, which can be done tonight.
But the, but the situation with.
That's not difficult.
But the situation is that.
It's just process.
He's following, following the bylaws.
No, he's not.
So if he's following the bylaws, the bylaws state that the executive director hires and fires.
We don't need to discuss whether or not he followed bylaws. We need to discuss, do y'all want an employee or not?
Do we want to employ, that's what.
And then my question.
And then they could go into executive session.
Okay, then my question, you mentioned about a contract, so my question is, you say he had another employee hired, so how many employees did he have hired over there at CEIDC?
Currently, it's, it's two people. Himself and Ms. Carolyn are two employees. He has a third contractor that the board approved and the council approved.
Okay.
The, the.
Project manager.
Project manager, coordinator.
Now, that project.
Both of y'all, both the board and the EDC, and the city council approved even that contracting position.
Now, my, my question.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
Is this, is this a part-time position or a full-time position?
Well, it was going to be, hopefully, a full-time position.
For how much? How much are we willing to pay him?
Six thousand a month.
Okay, now listen to this.
So seventy-two thousand, not sixty-five thousand?
Let me ask this question.
That sixty-five thousand that you're referring to is what is application with the workforce, but we had conversations about that being less than what I would like to be able to, but it was negotiable, depending on whether we were gonna be a long-term employee or for a short term, depending on how the next few months were gonna develop, it would develop into a possible full-time position, because as I said before, this was not just for him to go through files with me. There was a lot more to this job that I wanted to develop in terms of growth for this department, in terms of allowing us to broaden our spectrum. As I've mentioned to you, there are several projects that I'm working on, I'm trying to re-initiate, that I had initiated three years ago, that impact on, could impact on the environment of this whole community.
Can you tell me what that is?
Basically, one of them is the US 287.
That's gonna happen whether we're involved or not?
Well, I'm one of the reasons why it's been taken off a dead center, sir.
Okay, I think we're going far, okay, but did you have?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
My question, Ms. Nancy Wyndham, did you redo the budget for her?
Yes.
You did?
The, 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 the EDC board and council.
But the money's coming from CEIDC, and she making, hold on, she making seventy-two thousand dollars, she getting paid six thousand dollars a month.
She's a retired executive director of economic development. She's a retired executive director of economic development of the city of Frisco. She came in as a project manager while Mr. Gentry was gone, while Ms. Carolyn was gone, and I was doing all those projects by myself. I asked for help for a project manager.
She didn't come in at the very beginning.
Because I was overwhelmed with work, so council and the board approved me to hire a project coordinator to help until council, when council decided to, in the E D C board had decided to bring Mr. Gentry back, the understanding was that position would go away. We're now paying a full-time person to do those jobs. We're now having a, an executive assistant to do those jobs. We not only are keeping her on, we're hiring another person. That needs to be decided on.
Well, I feel like he have a right to hire who he need to get the job, since that was a problem.
If the board approves it, yes, sir.
So my question, my, well, my question overall is, I know you needed the help. So, and we, we, and of course, uh, I was looking over Ms. Nancy Wynder's contract. And it's, uh, she's basically hired to do the job of Mr. Gentry. And she's hired for six thousand dollars per month, and she's, um, only working thirty hours.
Doing Mr. Gentry's job.
Thirty hours per month.
Yes, ma'am.
Of services for C I D C, and y'all hired her.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, can you imagine how much infrastructure, or we, how many people we could give raises?
Y'all, you approved it.
Now this, I, I.
Yeah, this board approved it.
Yeah, okay, this board approved it, but what I'm, I'm bringing it to your, well, okay, I.
Okay, I think right now.
We're going, we're going way off track.
Okay, hold up, hold up.
But this is, this is what I can't understand.
Okay.
Is that we have, we're paying a consult.
I said, right now, we're gonna sign. Because right now, did you understand me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. What we're doing right now, we are going off, some of this was supposed to be in the executive session, that we were gonna discuss it, and I think we veered off of it. He's had his statement, there are two things that has to take, have to take place right now, is it a yay or a no? You can put it on, do we want an additional, or do we do, do not want? And that's what the, uh, item is about.
Well, I'll make my motion.
Yes, you can.
I'd like to make the motion to ratify, approve the new hire for unemployment with the C I D C with the same raise agreement that was accepted in the interview. That's my motion.
What is, what is those rates?
What, what was the rate?
Cause you, and you also need to make a budget amendment with this motion, please. Approve bringing in the budget.
Okay. As Mr. Angus Stein stated, we can make that budget amendment, Mr. Gentry, give him the approval to do so.
Okay.
That's the motion.
Did you say for the, the rate of the position?
I don't know what that is, it's either sixty-five or seventy.
What is the rate?
He know what it is.
I mean, no, no.
Yes, he do.
He been saying it all night. I'm sick of all that, tell the truth. No, he need to tell the truth. He need to tell the truth, you tell him that, enough.
Enough, enough. Everybody can ask the question.
I will always tell the truth.
Now, that's fine, what was the rate, Mr. Gentry?
Six thousand a month.
Okay, what is the, six thousand? And you said, is that with your, you, you asked for benefits, is that everything?
No, that's plus benefits.
Six thousand a month.
Right. And I, uh, sent all the information over to Mitzi for that assessment.
Six thousand a month, okay, now will you, uh, complete your, your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, did you put the amount in there? Did you put the amount in there?
Yeah, sixty-five thousand and six thousand dollars a month.
Okay, you said sixty-five or six, he said six.
Six thousand.
Six.
Two thousand.
Yeah, six thousand.
And you're saying sixty-five, that's enough?
What is this position?
It's six thousand, we're six thousand, which is seventy-two.
Six thousand a month to seventy-two.
This is a set, do we need that extra person at six thousand, is that?
So, so, yeah, so my question.
Why the mo, it's the motion on the floor? No, he was, he just wanted to clear, he clarified it, that he has the motion that's on the floor. And he say, and, and would you restate your motion again?
I'd like to make the motion to ratify, approve the new hire for employment with the C I D C with the same raise agreement that was accepted in the interview, which is with sixty-five, but we're saying seventy-two thousand, and give him the right to ratify, to make the amendments in his budget for this position for Mr. Woodrow Jones.
Oh, good, you can't.
Okay.
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits.
No names, Scott. Okay. It's a motion on the floor?
I second it.
It's been moved and second, all in favor? Okay, all oppose? Motion carries. No.
Now my question.
Okay, now we're, we're, we're up to, excuse me. Excuse me. Okay, now, we're gonna have the, uh, and now, we're going to.
We don't still, we still don't have an action, so you're asking.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
We need a, we need a, we need an action, uh, we need to know what to do with this position.
Okay.
Cause now there's.
Okay.
We're back to the.
Okay, now, okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we reject the hiring of the new employee for the C I D C and pay the current position the director offered the job to, for his services to date at the offered rate of thirty-one twenty-five an hour, and issue a ten ninety-nine for that purpose.
Okay.
Well. A second.
Okay.
I spoke right in there.
Repeat that, I mean, I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just trying to get an understanding.
Read the whole thing again?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. I move that we reject the hiring of the new employee for the C E I D C and pay the current person the director offered the job for, job to for his services to date at the offered rate of thirty-one twenty-five an hour, and issue a ten ninety-nine for tax purposes.
Okay. The motion is on the floor. Can we get a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, and that brings us to and now we're, um, the city council. All the, yeah.
The city council needs to vote to.
At this time, the city council need to vote on, is it the?
So basically, there's a commitment, there's a commitment. If, if we go back, he was offered this job August the twenty-ninth. It was his start date on his application and what Mr. Gentry confirmed. On the application, it also confirmed his, his salary was sixty-five thousand, and that is thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. So that's thirteen days of employment, at eight, at eight hours a day, including Labor Day. And then if we issue a, a, a ten ninety-nine for thirty-one twenty-five an hour for his services to date, that would be a, um, an expense of little over three thousand dollars. And not need to do the, so that's the amount that cap, that council now needs to approve to be expended. The ten ninety-nine amount of thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents an hour times thirteen days times eight hours.
Okay. Can we get a?
I'm sorry.
That's thirty-two fifty, three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for his, his last two, couple weeks of work, thirteen days of work.
Now, my question is, who, who would, um, who would he appeal, uh, make appeal process to, through the, through the council?
To the E D C board.
Or through the E D C board?
To the E D C board.
Because it had to be approved by them before it could come to the council.
Well, we are them.
I know, we, I'm just, I'm saying, yeah, in this role, you said which role would you be in? You mean, go back to the economic development.
What you say this was a joint meeting?
It is a joint meeting, but you still gotta have separate votes, because you're a joint agent, you're not the same agency.
And if coun, if council and the board both approve this decision, there's no one to appeal to. He can hire an attorney or, or appeal through the courts or through E O C or labor, you know, he has, he has his rights. He has his rights and he needs to exercise them. But the board needs to just make the right decision tonight.
And so the board has made their decision on that C E I D C. And now with the council is, is in a position, because we can't approve what the board hasn't, but there, there is a need for the council to make a recommendation of, of the payment as previously stated.
So we just made the decision as the C I D C board?
Yeah, and it, it was voted down.
Okay.
That the hiring was not accepted and no, no ratification.
And that was clear that we were the C I D C board at the time?
Yeah, it was, that was it. And now as the council, cause we're both voting on number eight, as it is. And so as a council, we now need a motion to, uh, address the payment.
Now my, my.
I make a motion, we pay the thirty-one.
Thirty-two fifty.
Thirty-two fifty.
For service render.
For services render.
For services render.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we're back in session. At this time, board, what is your pleasure on, um, item five and the C E I D C? No, I'm on the wrong one, right?
Item five and number nine.
And number nine, council number nine.
I, uh, mayor, I, I motion to recommend, um, upon once we, uh, find out that Mr. Gentry adopted the, um, city policy, uh, and to apply it to the C I D C, I recommend, um, a verbal recommend if we, once we find out, uh, or make, uh, honest, so we can make an honest decision on, um, if he violated, uh, a policy of, of the city.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and second. All in favor, I'm sorry. Oppose? Oh, I don't get to vote, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Well, you do get to vote, this is the E D C.
Oh, this is still E D, I'm sorry.
Can you tell me the motion again?
Uh, the motion, I recommend, the motion, I, I re, I recommend it to verbally recommend Mr. Gentry if, once we find out, once we verify if, that he's, uh, violated, uh, a, a, a bylaw. Um, but we need to find out if he violated about the city bylaws. I mean, violating the bylaw.
A bylaw or policy?
No, no, uh, city policy. Cause Mr. Gentry was supposed to adopt the, uh, by the state adopted the city policy. And he, we need to verify that he adopted that city policy in full.
It's already running.
He say he adopted part of it and not all of the city policy.
Okay, so it is already been moved and voted on, then we go to?
We don't go anywhere else unless council wants to make, or the board wants to make a, a new motion, since that one failed.
I move that James Gentry be placed on suspension without pay for two weeks for violations of policy and bylaws.
Can we get a second?
I second.
All in favor? Oppose?
Can we table this, cause we need to, we need to sit down and discuss what we really need to do, man. I don't think we, we got nothing from back out there. Can we make a motion to table?
Uh, this, this is already a motion on the floor, and it's been, uh, this.
Once that motion is done, you can.
Okay, you can do it up.
Where we at, mayor?
Did you, okay, I know we had, did you, uh, he hadn't voted either way?
I ain't.
So it's, uh, no? Is I go, so, I make, is it a, oh, hold on, is it a tie then, or? I lost the count.
It was a tie.
It's two to two at this point with one abstention, so technically that's a no vote, cause he didn't vote for the motion. So it's three.
It's a no vote.
Three to two, so it's still a no vote.
It's a no vote.
So, uh.
Right, Mr. Pemberton?
Yep.
Okay, so what do we, we go, now we go, do we offer another motion, or?
Triple A, just to clarify, the E D C is the only one that addresses personnel-related issues. The only reason the city council has to vote is if the E D C committed to expenditures or, you know, uh, uh, operational changes such as that. So if there was no votes on either one of the E D C actions, then, um, then item dead.
So what was the last one that was on the table, I, I missed it?
It was just a, it was a no vote. You talking about mine?
No, yeah.
I make a motion with adjournment.
Okay, hold on. No, no, nope, nope, uh, we're still talking. Not today. Finish the motion before you will not be adjourned right now.
Well, well, let me, I, I just need to hear the motion, cause when he spoke, that kind of threw me off of what he voted for.
She's asking you for clarification on your motion, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you.
All right. It was, I move that James Gentry be placed on suspension without pay for two weeks for violations of policy and procedures.
We've already voted.
We already voted.
Okay, now, I just said it's for clarification, so it was.
She was asking what it was for.
It was a tile, so, um, what was it?
He didn't vote.
No vote.
He didn't vote.
Okay, so you didn't vote for it?
No.
He didn't vote for it, okay, so it's, um, three to two, yeah.
Okay, and so, the other, none of, neither one of them passed it.
Technically, you're an E D C member, you're supposed to vote, so if you voted for that, then it'd be three to three, and it still wouldn't pass. It'd be a no vote, because it wasn't an affirmative action.
Okay.
So if you record your vote as a yes.
Yes.
His is a no, it's still three to three, so no action taken.
No action taken. And so, um, we'll put it on next agenda. You dismiss.